The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers.
Please bring some more attention.
Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Kotor, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Varmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Kotor, Alderman Howard, Alderman Davis, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, twenty present.
Quarant being present, unless everyone in the chambers and the galleries who is able to stand, please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to welcome today as my honored guest, Megan Armentraut, who's with the Incarnate Word Foundation. They're going to be doing a lot of work down in the Dutch Town neighborhood.
Welcome, Megan. Alderman from the eighth. No, no. Any further introductions? Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I would like to have as my special guest today Anthony Lancia with AGC of Missouri, and Gina Hackenworth with Ameren.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the eighteenth.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to introduce as my special guest today, Mr. Jesse Todd, committed in the eighteenth ward, to my right.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yeah, Mr. President, member of the board, although I don't have all their names written down, I'd like to have as my special guest, Mike Grady, and the guys from the Plumbers and Pipefitters, and Keith Taylor, and all the guys from the Carpenters Union.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I didn't think you'd look this way again.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
I'd like to have for my honored guest today, Martina Johnson, representing the St. Louis Realtors Association.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the twentieth.
President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my special guest constituent Eric Shelquist, who's here today to keep an eye on us at the board, and I see in the gallery, we have Barbara Nelson from St. Louis City Kitties, and also Chris Knappseger, president of our Star Grove East Neighborhood Association, also here to keep an eye on us at the board.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? We also have with us Nicole Stevenson, Nicole, could you please stand, and her partner Angela Brown, who could not be here today, are celebrating ten years of Cafe Soul live music events, and their collaboration with partner Tony Thompson of Kwame, they now have a permanent location on Washington Avenue. I know a lot of you have enjoyed Cafe Soul events, so now you have an opportunity to enjoy those live events on Washington Avenue at Cafe Soul Club downtown. Let's give her a round of applause and thank you for, congratulations on ten years also. Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, as we're gathered here on this blustery Friday, which is the nineteenth of February. It was on this day in eighteen seventy-eight that Thomas Edison invented the phonograph, but most importantly, this is a day for all you folks who, not that any of you ever do, feel the need to do something completely stupid, silly, or insane. This is Temporary Insanity Day, so go ahead and enjoy yourselves. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. We also have with us Reverend John Scott Watson, thank you for being here today. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of the February fifth minutes.
Move about Alderman from the eighteenth, second about Alderman from the sixth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes.
With dispens for line items seven and eight, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We will dispense with line items nine through ten, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill three-ten, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance pertaining to tampering with witness or victim prohibiting conduct by any individual which has the intention or to cause a witness or victim to fail to comply with or assist a police investigation or legal proceeding, including court proceeding, administrative hearing, or a board hearing, and all related investigations thereto within the city containing definitions, prohibitions, and penalties. Board Bill three-eleven, sponsored by Alderman Tyus, and ordinance prohibiting the installation of any new pole signs, any sandwich signs, limiting signage to one sign attached to the building, and establishing a closing time of seven o'clock PM for businesses located on King's Highway Memorial Boulevard, containing an exception and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill three-twelve, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for eighteen seventeen Lynch. Board Bill three-thirteen, sponsored by Alderman Carter, and ordinance authorizing and directing the streets, the director of streets is temporarily closed, barricade or otherwise, impede the flow of traffic on North Point by blocking said traffic flow at Goodfellow and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill three-fourteen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to purchase and acquire real property and improvements commonly known as twelve, twelve through eighteen, and fourteen oh one Central Industrial Drive from Green Street Central Industrial Drive. The total purchase price for the property, including seller, including seller-provided improvements, shall not exceed eleven million four hundred thousand dollars. Board Bill three-fifteen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance to amend section eleven point oh six, three, seven, oh of the revised code and enacting in lieu thereof a new section to be known as eleven point oh six point three, seven, oh of the revised code relating to tax abatement procedures of the land clearance for redevelopment authority and planned industrial expansion authority. Board Bill three-sixteen, sponsored by Alderman Cruzen, and ordinance approving a blighting study in redevelopment plan for sixty-one oh five Del Mar, and containing and a severability clause. Board Bill three-seventeen, sponsored by Alderman Cruzen, and ordinance dissolving special allocation fund for the Del Mar Loop North redevelopment area and terminating the designation of certain respective portion of the city related to a redevelopment area and authorizing certain actions relating thereto and containing a severability clause. Board Bill three-eighteen, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimant and Apportement, authorizing and directing the St. Louis Municipal Finance Corporation to issue and sell its leasehold revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed thirteen minute, million dollars in order to finance or refinance a portion of the cost of the acquisition of certain real properties and improvements located at twelve, fourteen through eighteen Central Industrial Drive, a portion of the cost of repairing, construction, renovation, improvement, and equipment of municipal garage located at eleven twenty-two Clark Avenue and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill three-nineteen, sponsored by Alderman Carter, and ordinance authorizing and directing the director of streets is temporarily closed, barricade or otherwise, impede the flow of traffic on Saloma by blocking said traffic flow at Woodstock and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill three-twenty, sponsored by Alderman Behringer, and ordinance repealing ordinance six-six-nine-two-two pertaining to certain temporary street closing and enacting a new ordinance in lieu thereof, authorizing and directing the director of streets to close barricade or otherwise, impede the flow of traffic on McCloslin, at Chippewa, on Plainview at Jamison, on Highview at Jamison, and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of our first reading.
Roughens the committee.
To the Public Safety Committee, board bills three-ten and three-eleven, to the Neighborhood Development Committee, board bills three-twelve and three-sixteen, to the Streets Committee, board bills three-thirteen, three-nineteen, and three-twenty, to the Housing Committee, board bills three-fifteen and three-seventeen, and to the Ways and Means Committee, board bills three-fourteen and three-eighteen. That is the extent of reference to committees.
Madam Clerk, also assign Board Bill three-oh-eight to Parks.
So noted.
Second reading.
Following board bills were reported out of the Ways and Means Committee, board Bill two-eighty-two, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, and Alderman Cruzen, and ordinance repealing ordinance seven-oh-one-six-six, which authorized the city to enter into a financing agreement with the Regional Convention and Sports Complex Authority that would have used public monies to help fund the construction of a new professional sports facility designed to host professional football and other sporting recreational and entertainment events and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two-fifty-three, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, and ordinance to amend ordinance five-eight-seven-two-eight, as amended by ordinance five-nine-two-four-eight, and amended by ordinance six-five, six-zero-five-three-oh, as amended by ordinance six-five-one-three-three, enlarging the boundaries thereof, and, and as amended by ordinance six-six-seven-six-seven, relating to the local central business district, a special business district, and containing a severability clause. Following board bill was reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee, board Bill three-seven-four, sponsored by, board Bill two-seven-four, sponsored by Alderman Cruzen, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Comptroller and the Board of Estimant and Apportement, making certain findings with respect to the transfer of up to thirteen million seven hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars of excess monies that the city, the owner and operator of Lambert Airport, of Lambert intends to transfer from the Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Airport Revenue Fund, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of Streets Committee, board Bill two-sixty, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate public service rights for travel on an irregular portion of Children's Place West of Taylor. Board Bill two-six-two, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service vacating a portion of air rights for an irregular portion of Children's Place West of Taylor. Board Bill three-two-six-three, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service vacating a portion of air rights for a fifteen-foot section of Taylor South of Children's Place. Board Bill two-six-four, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate a five-by-ten-foot section of sidewalk on Children's Place West of Taylor. Board Bill two-eight-five, sponsored by Alderman and all the women, Ortman, Kotor, Howard, Davis, Villa, Honowitz, French, Moore, Carter, and Ingracia, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service establishing a public works project for traffic management enhancement phase three, which improves upon the means for the city to manage traffic and safety within the transportation network, including the establishment of a new realtime transportation intelligence center located in nineteen fifteen Olive, and containing a public work emergency clause. That is the extent of our second readings.
With dispens for line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill two-seven-nine, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Kotor, and ordinance pertaining to commercial semi-trailer trucks, also known as semis, tractor trailers prohibiting such traffic along Russell, from the east boundary of Seventh to the west boundaries of Gravoy's, exempting from said prohibition, emergency vehicles, including privately-owned tow trucks when providing emergency service to non-commercial vehicles, vehicles making deliveries to nearby addresses, and vehicles with gross vehicle weight of less than twenty-six thousand pounds, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two-eight-one, sponsored by Alderman and all the women, Davis, Bosley, Conway, Ortman, Moore, French, Carter, Tyus, Murphy, Kotor, and Spencer, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commissioner to take unnecessary actions to honorarily designate the seven-hundred block of North Spring as Leon Henderson Avenue. Board Bill two-eight-three, sponsored by Alderman Tyus, and ordinance directing, the director of streets is temporarily closed, barricade or otherwise, and be the flow of traffic on Terry at the West Curb Line of King's Highway Memorial Boulevard and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two-nine-seven, sponsored by Alderman Moore, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commissioner to take unnecessary actions to designate honorarily the forty-six-hundred block of Page as Reverend Ronald Bobo Avenue. Board Bill two-nine-eight, sponsored by Alderman Moore, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commissioner to take unnecessary actions to designate honorarily the forty-two-hundred block of Kennerly as Bishop Robert J. Ward Avenue. Board Bill three-oh-four, sponsored by Alderman Moore, and ordinance establishing a stop-type for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Page Avenue at Marcus Avenue and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Move about Alderman from the eighteenth, second about Alderman from the twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. We will dispense with line item sixteen through eighteen, dispense with line item nineteen. I move for adoption our cursory resolution calendar, I maintain the second on that motion. Second about Alderman from the twenty-third, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Dispense with line item twenty-one and twenty-two. Miss Lance, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, February the twenty-second, is the use of fourth subcommittee at nine AM in the Kennedy Room. Tuesday, Neighborhood Development Meeting, nine AM in the Kennedy Room. On Wednesday, Housing Committee Meeting at eight-thirty AM in the Kennedy Room. Also on Wednesday, Ways and Means Committee Meeting, ten AM in the Leisure Room. Thursday, Public Safety Meeting, ten AM in the Kennedy Room. Also on Thursday, Streets Committee Meeting, eleven AM in the Leisure Room. Friday, Full Board Meeting, ten AM in the Chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the fifteenth.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to give just a quick statement about, you know, some of my thoughts, feelings, perceptions, and everything over the last couple of months. First, I wanted to start off by saying that the only reason I was not at the hearing this week was after the aldermen from the twenty-third ward in the post-dispatch threatened legal action. And so I did consult an attorney who said, you know, without a subpoena, you don't want to appear, because you're being asked to give evidentiary testimony without, without those legal safeguards in place. So that is the only reason I was not there this week. But I wanted to, now that that is behind us, I wanted to be able to speak freely about, you know, some of my thoughts, concerns, and also to, to ask a few things of, of the board. So some aldermen I know feel that I owe this board an apology, and so what I wanted to do today is break my silence, make it clear what I am sorry for, and indicate what actions I commit to going forward, to make, and make a couple of requests of this board. I do want to apologize to Alderman Moore, as I felt, as I have come to understand that he felt personally attacked by my comments. That was never my intent to implicate Alderman Moore in anything nefarious. My only intent was to refer to his testimony from the December eleventh Ways and Means Committee Meeting, which from his statements, I felt that his personal experiences lent credibility to some of the other things that I thought were going on, and my sincere apologies to him if he felt attacked by any of my statements. I also recognize that some of the African-American aldermen feel that my statements had racial undertones. Again, my apologies if this is how they were perceived, as that was never my intent. In fact, I was shocked and pretty horrified that my words were taken in that manner. Achieving racial justice in St. Louis is one of the main reasons that I ran for office. I believe that in the first time in perhaps the history of this board, we are at a place where we have the real potential of having a north-south contingency, supporting each other in, in their, in their legislative agendas. So I maintain my commitment to fighting for racial justice and supporting the agenda of the Black Caucus. In sum, I want to take responsibility for my statements and the repercussions that they may have had, and in the future, I will be sure to choose words that reflect truly what is in my heart and cannot be perceived or interpreted in a way to cause hurt to anyone, and I hope that aldermen will accept this as my apology. I also recognize that by critiquing the body of the Board of Aldermen, several aldermen feel that I owe the body as a whole an apology. I do not accept this to be true. To quote JFK, "Without debate, without criticism, no administration and no country can succeed and no republic can survive." I believe the same is true for the Board of Aldermen. We must not be afraid to look in the mirror and recognize that we can always improve. It's possible to love the people that you serve with while also critiquing the system in which we operate. I am unapologetic in thinking that we owe it to the people of St. Louis to continually critique ourselves in order to produce a more open, honest, accountable, and transparent government for the people of the city of St. Louis, and I will continue to work for that. In following JFK's example, I will spend the upcoming recess working on a comprehensive strategy for ethics reform for the Board of Aldermen. I've already had conversations with some aldermen about how we can improve our processes to create a more open, honest, and transparent form of government. I invite others to join in this conversation and hope that the silver lining in all of this will be a commitment to comprehensive ethics reform. I'd also like to speak to a personal point of view about a double standard that I, I have felt existed through this entire process, whether intended or not. It has come to my attention that on at least four occasions over the last several years...
Yeah, please state your...
As long as we're having this thing, are you going to provide an opportunity for other people to speak on this topic? Where I feel like I'm being lectured down here by someone, and, which is fine, I don't mind having that discussion, but are you going to provide other people a chance today to respond to what is being said?
Absolutely, because, because actually, this belonged in the committee hearing, but...
I would object, and this whole discussion, I think this whole discussion may have... Where all of, where a whole number of us came down there to have this discussion, but now we're having it on the floor of the Board of Aldermen, completely out of order. And if we want to go ahead and kind of turn this into an hour debate or discussion today, I'm okay with it. It's just that I want to make sure that other people have the opportunity to respond to some of the things that are being said.
Yes, Alderman, you know, I appreciate the statements of the day, but they really belonged in that committee hearing to give opportunity for open discussion on it, it is exceeding the boundaries of the, of the announcements, right?
I apologize for that, Mr. President. I, you know, as I said in the beginning, on advice of counsel, I was told not to attend that hearing without a subpoena, because there would not be those legal safeguards, and I wanted to be sure that I, I issued my apology to those that I feel are due an apology, and also enabled to give my perspective to, to how I have felt over these last couple of months.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Alderman.
So I would respectfully ask, I don't have very much more to go, but I would ask, I mean, I don't see the, the floor, why does she interrupt you? She never answered that question. Who can answer your request? I think she never answered the question. Why? She's...
Alderman from the seventeenth, please.
I, you know, I just think that this is completely out of order, and if she wanted to have this discussion, we can go ahead and we'll bring the, the resolution back up in the committee. I think the committee would be willing to come back down and provide her a second, a form, if she wants to come down and answer questions. I, not chair, I don't want to speak for the chair, but, you know, this is completely inappropriate to be sitting here getting lectured by somebody who, you know, frankly, you know, embarrassed all of us with very little evidence, and then tried to turn this thing, I mean, the laws of this country are very clear. Freedom of speech goes so far, but when you start attacking people's character, that's something else. I mean, there are people down here that are wonderful people, that have, have contributed their, their lives to public service, they're down here retired and doing all these things, and to go ahead and abuse and embarrass them, and make, you know, make these unfounded accusations is just completely inappropriate. And to stand up and act like, you know, she's going to lead some sort of ethics reform down here is just, you know, it's, it's an embarrassment. I mean, who, who is she to come down here and tell all of us, you know, you know, what's wrong with us? I mean, this is completely and utterly, you know, out of order, and if she wants to go ahead and do it, she should have been down at the committee meeting last week where all of us were waiting for.
All right. Alderman, Alderman, you are pushing the boundaries of the announcement section. I knew that, knew that kind of going into it, but I wanted to give you as much opportunity as possible. I think you've gotten a lot of your statement out. If you want to continue, I'm sure the chairman would be willing to hold another hearing so that we can, so that we can walk through the stuff slowly, but, you know, this...
Why do you prefer to be in that, I can get my... She's quite effective, she can put her, her Facebook at, you know, all I know other people down here, she don't care what's going on, let her put it down on the app.
Alderman from the second.
Mr. President, members of the board, point of order, I'm not always on Twitter or Facebook. I didn't know that there was a possible threat from the Alderman from the twenty-third. Now we have threats that are, in my opinion, I would like to also know what's going on. So could you please, as chairman of the Personnel Committee, hold a, another meeting next week so that we can hear exactly what's all going on, because I'm not as purview as to what's going on on social media.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would be open to do that with the Alderman from the nineteenth, who is in charge of this now. Alderman from the nineteenth.
Mr. President, members of the board, I feel now that it is very important that there is a reason to continue the process. I believe that Ms. Green should have that opportunity to speak in that formal setting. This is not, the apology is fine, but when you get into the critiquing of the board and what our process and procedure should be, and all those other things, this is not the appropriate setting for it, and I would be happy to allow that to take place and set up another meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, there'll be another meeting scheduled. You'll have an opportunity to talk. I talked to your attorney at the last meeting and told him, it's okay, he could attend with you and stand with you and advise you the whole way, and the purpose of it was, with Alderman from the nineteenth, when she put the agenda together, was to make sure that there was an open, you know, process, and everybody had an opportunity to weigh in on it, and then something productive can come out of it. We're gonna, point of order, well taken, we're gonna move on, Alderman. You could, yeah, could you please have a conversation with Alderman from the nineteenth about the, about the personnel meeting? So any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce my special guest, the esteemed committee man Andre Williams from the twenty-second ward, and the owner of You Gotta Eat Here.
Oh. Does it still have fat burgers?
I can't extend that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm going to remind you until my play is over with, with Metro Theater, it's the story of Cassius Clay. It runs this weekend and the next weekend. This Sunday's performance, the Honorable Jimmy Edwards, will be recognized for all he has done for youth and this community. So if you have an opportunity, come out to the play and support it, and again, I will remind you that over six thousand youth are having the availability to see the play for free, so hopefully you'll have that opportunity. We have a lot of activities going on in the city of St. Louis. It's one of those times when we all come together, we stop all the business of the day and make sure that we understand a lot more about Black history and who brought us thus far. Empowering Our Youth Black History Celebration will be Monday, February twenty-ninth, from six-thirty to eight-thirty PM at Harrisville State University at the Emerson Performance Center. I hope that you have an opportunity to be there. It will be moderated by people that you know well. Tony Thompson will be there as a moderator. Tony Thompson will be there as a moderator, Sable Campbell will be a moderator, and the keynote speaker is Bishop Lester Woods. So if you have an opportunity, please come out. And lastly, I wanted to recognize the Black History Celebration and Memorial Tribute to Reverend W.J. Daniel and Mr. Tony Simmons. As most of you all know, he was a renowned artist, musician, for years in our community. This will be held at the South Side Wellness Center, and that's, it's going to have a great luncheon, too, if you like good food. So that's Friday, February twenty-sixth, from eleven A.M. to two P.M., and the music will be provided by our wonderful martyr Adula. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Aldermen from the first and the twenty-sixth be excused for necessary absence.
Been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, Friday, February twenty-sixth, ten A.M.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the tenth. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, stand adjourned.